And good evening and welcome to the February 9th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us, with us, and we're glad to have those that are at home watching on TV. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as Board Member Becky Goff will lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. All right, board members, you have seen a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications. Ms. Trail?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
So, we want to start off by thanking the city of Murfreesboro. The employees, especially Murfreesboro Parks and Rec, did a Pack the Packs initiative, which resulted in the donation of 1,900 food items to the Backpack Food Program in recognition of the 2021 MLK Day of Service. So, we received a lot of bounty and we appreciate that. That will go out in those weekend backpacks. So, thank you to the city of Murfreesboro for thinking of our students. Also, last week, we announced our District Teachers of the Year. They are here tonight to be, you can quiz them with all kinds of things.
All right.
But I would like for them to join me up here, Ms. Tiara Vance and Mr. Mark Hales. They are your District Teachers of the Year. Tiara teaches at Discovery School, kindergarten. And Mr. Hales teaches at Hermosillo Elementary in the band. If you were with us last week, we walked in on both of them. Mr. Hales just kept teaching and Discovery really pulled one off on Ms. Vance. So, it was really nice to be able to applaud them and celebrate them and know that of all the teachers, these two are representing us on a regional level. They have a lot of paperwork to do. They have a little bit of time to get it done in, but I'm going to let them, if you would like, I'm going to actually give you this podium and say whatever you want to say.
Whatever I want to say.
You've got 30 seconds.
30 seconds.
Oh, no. I just, it's an honor to be chosen as a district, one of the District Teachers of the Year. I love my job. I love teaching music. My goal is to, you know, as a kid, I don't remember my music at all. And so, as a music educator, I want the young kids to enjoy music in that way when they get older, that they'll have an appreciation for it. And that's my goal as a music teacher. So, I really appreciate this award and I want to turn it to you.
Okay. All right, well, I just, I really appreciate this. I feel very honored to have been one of the people who have been chosen for District Teacher of the Year. I've always known that I wanted to teach kindergarten. I decided that when I was in kindergarten. And some of the books in my classroom are from my kindergarten classroom when I started putting them aside in my bookbox. So, this is all I know and all I've ever wanted to do. So, to be recognized for that is just really, really nice. So, thank you guys all very much. And there is a committee that, on the school-wide level, that really does select these District Teachers of the Year. I have to tell you, our Teachers of the Year on the school level are outstanding. It was not an easy job, but we are very proud of them. And I really am thankful for that committee that comes together and makes those hard decisions. That's your communication, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. And we're glad to have the two Teachers of the Year with us tonight. And I enjoyed being in both of your, well. Ms. Vance, we weren't in your classroom. We were in the cafeteria, but that was quite a surprise for you. And I think it was also a surprise for Mr. Hales when we walked into his room with his guitar and all the students playing. It was very, very enjoyable. And we congratulate both of you and best of luck in the next level. Thank you. All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Who was that? Ms. Moore, thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, let's go down to action items.
Yes, sir. The first item on the agenda for action items is approval of the 21-22 school calendar. You approved it in first reading at the last board meeting. Since then, Rutherford County has approved their academic calendar. We match up very well with theirs. In fact, we start on the exact same day, our teachers do. August 2nd, which is, in the past several years, we've started in July. So, our first day for teachers is August 2nd and the first day for students is Friday, August the 6th. And that matches with the county. We have the same breaks and we have the same last day of school. So, I recommend approval for second reading.
All right, any question?
No, I'd just like to say-
I just had a question.
I'm sorry. Who?
I did.
Go ahead, Ms. Goff.
I was just going to ask, did we have some input with MEA on the calendar? Did they-
The MEA was great with this and the principals were also, they approved it.
Okay, Ms. Barton?
Just want to say, great job, because I know how hard it is to match it up with the counties. And that's fantastic. We make so many people, their lives easier when we do that. So, good job.
Thank you, Ms. Barton.
You're welcome.
Mr. Richardson?
Mr. Chairman, and thank you. Are we matching up with the county's days or are they matching up with our days?
Don't go there.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I did take both calendars today and I went through them to see just exactly how much we matched up. And we do match up very well. Certainly, there are some days throughout the calendar where our students may be a half a day and they're a full day or we're vice versa, whatever. But it's very well done and looks like a lot of-
And we put in four stockpile days in our calendar to use as professional development. Because you know, we're not going to use all of our stockpile days.
Right. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the calendar on second reading?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, wait, Mr. Ballard, you had a question?
I pulled the trigger late on a question here. Okay, I know we're looking at summer school. Are we just handling that outside of the yearly schedule for-
Yes, sir, it's an addition. Yes.
Okay, so it'll just be, it'll be a standalone calendar or if there will be a calendar for that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, now, we had a motion to approve the calendar on second reading, Mr. Richardson?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Action item, Board Policy 5.2?
That's Ms. Taylor.
Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The amendment to Board Policy 5.200 is just two small amendments to make it in line with the statute by adding military service as a reason that a teacher could break their contract and then correcting that it is the State Board of Education who could possibly take an action against a teacher who breaks a contract versus the Commissioner of Education.
Okay. Any question? Have a motion to approve the policy?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Board Policy 5.201?
This change is the same as the one in the previous policy. The only difference between the policy is one is for tenured teachers and the other is for non-tenured. The same changes were made, adding military service as a reason to break an educator contract and then correcting that it is the State Board, not the Commissioner, who can take an action against a license for breaking a contract.
Okay. Have a motion to approve-
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Let's see, where are we now? I'm losing it over here.
5D, Director's Contract?
Director's Contract, okay. Do you want to go over the contract or you want me to?
Well, I think the board members have a copy of the contract that they were sent ahead of time to review. This is the standard TSBA Director's Contract that Mr. Chairman and myself negotiated with Mr. Duke and came to these terms that we think are fair and equitable to all parties. And I would recommend approving Mr. Duke's contract.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the contract as prepared and submitted to the board.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any other questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Opening-closed zone recommendations, Mr. Ringstaff?
Yes, sir. It's this time of year that we have to dictate which schools will be open zone, which will be closed, and which will be choice. And we have chosen to have exactly the same schools in each category as the year before.
Okay. Have a motion to approve the zoning of schools?
I have a question, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
All right, sir, if you want to ask the question first, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a particular reason why we replicated that same decision from last year?
We feel that the same schools can add more students. And that's why we kept them open zone and those schools that we have closed zone can't take any more students outside their zone.
So, it's quite literally what we can do?
Exactly.
Very well. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any other question? All right, do we have a motion to approve the opening-closed-zone schools for 2021 and '22?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Substitute teacher pay, Mr. Ringstaff?
Yes, sir, thank you. Our current pay scale is, if they're not a certified teacher, they will receive $85 a day, a substitute teacher will. If they are certified as a classroom teacher, they will receive $95. And there's the half-days, $42.50 and $47.50. And during the first semester, we awarded, we gave an incentive, if a substitute teacher taught more than 20 days, they got five extra dollars. If they subbed for more than 50 days, they got an additional $5, which would take those rates to $95 and $105 a day. Right now, we're doing pretty good getting subs. For the month of January, our sub fill rate was 85%, which is the highest anywhere in middle Tennessee, I think. And I don't want to brag about that too loud, knock on wood. But we want to prepare for the several months ahead. I know that when it gets warmer weather, that our absenteeism rate goes up. So, we were proposing to lower those days that a sub has to sub before they get the incentive. Reduce it from 20 days to 15 days and from 50 days to 30 days. We hope that will entice more subs to sub and get the extra incentives. We estimate, according to our first semester numbers, we estimated that it will cost less than $5,000 extra to do this for the remainder of the school year. Now, I'm not saying that we're going to do this next school year. We will evaluate that for the next budget year. So, I'm recommending approval for us to do this and retro it back to January the 5th, when school opened.
Mr. Settles?
Thank you, sir. This is in regard to consecutive days, right?
No, sir.
It doesn't matter, just-
Exactly, accumulative.
Okay.
Yes.
Either way, more money's more money and I'm all for it.
I move to approve. We need to, we've got to have subs in the spring, so.
Motion has been made to approve. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. I did check today with Rutherford County and they are $5 less per day on their sub pay. So, we are again above and beyond.
Again, I would say that.
Just don't say that too loud.
Say it now, because it is today.
I might come back to you next month, then.
I have a motion and a second to approve the change in substitute teacher pay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports and information. New Councilor Week. Mr. Marlin, thank you.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I want to, I'm proud to have the honor to share about School Counselors Week, which took place last week. School Counselor Week took place February 1st through the 5th. Sponsored by the National School Counseling, the American School Counseling Association. And the theme for this year was School Counselors All In for All Students. So, tonight, we have some counselors with us. I'm going to bring them up and let them, they have a presentation they wanted to share with you. I just want to tell you how much I enjoy working with these people because they're a hard-working group of people that provide some tremendous services for our students. In our district, we're fortunate to have school counselors and you all, most of you all are younger than me, but you remember, we used to call them guidance counselors. And school counselors do a totally different job. As a matter of fact, our folks get a little offended, come on ladies, a little offended if we refer to them as guidance counselors because they do so much more. They actually counsel students, they work with families, they work with our behavioral programs. They lead in so many areas in our schools to help with our multi-tiered systems of support, our RTI2B program, which is for behavior. So, they do so many different things. They wanted to share some information with you tonight. And so, I did want to share this so they would be prepared. Come on, Gina, I'll let you get this ready to go. But they, the word pivot has been used a lot in this time during COVID. And we talked about having to switch quickly and, you know, be ready on a moment's notice to make the needed changes. And that's what they have been responsible for in their schools. And they wanted to share some information about that tonight with a video.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight. Have the-
Can I ask you, when you speak, if you'll just pull your mask down? That's for TV coverage. They can understand us better that way.
Gotcha. So used to being covered. We just want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. We have had an awful lot of fun last week celebrating ourselves for a change, which is kind of fun. Typically, the school counselors are going to be the ones in the background, the cheerleaders of what all's going on within the school that we serve, the district that we participate in. And as Mr. Marlin has mentioned, pivot is a word that we've used a lot. We're kind of, you know, we've heard enough of what is the word that we've used all year, unprecedented. I've heard that enough. Things are different. Yes, they certainly are. So, let's just get the job done. And that's just what we've done. And in our meetings that we've had, we've continued to do so many of the things that we have always done, but just in a little bit of a variety of ways. So, I feel like we have made some great accomplishments this year in spite of the troubles, in spite of the issues that we've had. But we decided to show you all some of the new ways, the new improved ways, maybe, that we've put some things into place for you. And we've used the word pivot and for those of us of a certain age, the episode of Friends always comes into mind when we hear the word pivot and trying to push that couch up and down that stairwell. And we've pushed a lot of couches up and down some stairwells this year. So, we thought we'd start out with that and just let you see some of the things that we've put into place this year. So, here we go.
Go pivot! 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 Pivot!
In Murfreesboro City Schools, school counselors are on the ball. We adapt to the ever-changing needs of our populations, our schools, and our district.
Hello, I'm Marion Evilseizer and I am one of the school counselors at Overall Creek Elementary.
And I'm Stephanie Van Winkle. I'm the other counselor here at Overall Creek. And this year, our focus is teaching teachers to care for themselves.
Student success has and is a primary focus of Murfreesboro City School Counselors. But due to the needs of pivot, the teachers' and staff's well-being has also become the utmost of importance, which directly contributes to student safety, academic success, and their overall well-being.
This year has been all about putting our proverbial ducks in a socially-distanced row. And we've done this by using research.
Hi, I'm Gina Surjener.
And I'm Becca Forte. And we're the school counselors at Scales Elementary. Since last March, your Murfreesboro City School Counselors have used a lot of research to be able to serve our students.
One way we use research is trying to determine what kind of things we needed to target when the students came back into school. And then that turned into finding different ways that we can incorporate lessons into, for the students when they're here.
Since last March, we've also provided parent engagement sessions to help our parents. This is a stressful time and our parents needed to know how they can best support their children while learning at home and then while they come back into the school setting.
And then lastly, we try to do professional development to help the teachers inside the school to learn better ways to help the students when they return.
So, as you can see, research has been a great big part of all the things that we put in place for our students this year. We hope that we've been able to serve our community in effective ways and using new technologies and doing all the things that we can to help our students feel safe, secure, and be able to learn while they're at school.
In Murfreesboro City Schools, school counselors are working hard to be creative during this time and learning new ways to engage students to be successful in both the in-person and virtual learning classrooms.
We are trauma-responsive. Now, we have always responded to trauma, but in these new changing times, we are trauma-informed, trauma-sensitive, and trauma-responsive. And we are training our teachers and staff to be the same so that we can serve all students.
Hard to predict.
That's right. We learned a very important lesson this year. Children actually do very well with taking their temperatures quick and wearing their masks.
New methods.
New methods give us hope for a brighter future.
Here at Murfreesboro City Schools, school counselors have used our community to stay connected, energized, and focused during this time of distress.
Murfreesboro City School Counselors have learned to expand our counseling techniques and use of technology over the last year through this pandemic. It's just like we do with our students. For example, if you can look at this rock and this putty here, we help our students to know that they don't have to be like this rock, hard and immovable. They can be more like this putty. They can be stretching and expanding and moving. And this is how we teach them resiliency. And they can use those skills throughout their entire life for times just like these.
Hi, I'm Tracy Adams, school counselor at Bradley Academy. Here at Bradley Academy, we are very intentional and strategic about helping our students to grow their minds through hard work, persistence, effort, and learning new methods often, even in despite of challenges. And we do this with so much love. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Van Winkle, counselor at Case and Lane Elementary. And welcome to our teacher recharge room.
Hi, and I'm Nick Hunt, senior school counselor at Case and Lane. And our work for the year is self-care.
Whether it's through using new technology resources or through finding new and innovative ways to interact with our stakeholders, Murfreesboro City Schools counselors have the courage to step outside of our comfort zones.
In Murfreesboro City, school counselors are seeking to find the beauty in all of the change and striving to help students and teachers alike see the beauty amongst the chaos to create our own happy place.
Hi, Murfreesboro City Schools counselors have done a lot of teaching and talking about a pandemic and teaching kids to wear PPE. We've gotten really good at using the internet. I've talked so much about a virus and what it might do to us and I've learned so much. I'm helping everybody be open to change. And, most importantly, we're talking a lot about how to take care of ourselves and each other. So, my word is pivot. And we've learned to do it in 2020.
Thank you. So, as you can see, we've done lots of fun things this year. We hope we can continue to encourage and uplift and be a very vital part of what our school system is doing. We thank you, guys, for all of your encouragement and your support throughout the years. I mean, we did a presentation four years ago, sorry, and it was much different than this year. So, you know, this is just what we do. We grow, we stretch, we learn. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Barton?
I just wanted to say that truly, these are unsung heroes. The things they have to help with, the things they do at the last minute. I've been there with them and they did every bit as much as I did. And I just thank you. Don't know how to thank you enough because you are helping kids that may not get help anywhere else. So, we appreciate so much what you do.
I will speak a little bit of that too, Roseanne. Of course, since I've retired, a lot of things have changed. But I can remember the counselors that we had, the ones we had, were just fantastic with students and even with some teachers. And I know that you do that as well and you are very well appreciated. I know by this board and the central office and I'm sure by the staff in your buildings and also certainly the students that you serve each and every day. Thank you for a job well done. Mr. Settles?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the counselors. I want to say on a personal note, there's two things I want to say. On a personal note, I want to say thank you. I have a grandson at Bradley Academy. And you may or may not know that he lost his dad in July. And it has been very, 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 very difficult for him. I've talked to his mom a couple of times and he's had some, of course, understandable breakdowns. But the fact that he's able to go and talk to his counselor has been tremendous. That has been a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful kind of godsend. been a wonderful, 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 kind of Godsend-type deal, so thank you for that. I think that is excellent. A lot of people don't understand just how much school counselors mean, especially in the elementary area. I think that's great. The other part, I have kind of a question, which has to do with if you've seen an increase maybe in some need for counseling with some of the, you know, every week or so, we're getting updates about so many classes being quarantined, so many teachers being quarantined. We're in school, we're out of school, we're, you know, all these types of things. There's a lot of changing. And one of the things that I hear as a theme on a national level, even a state level, is, you know, kids need to be in school, they need to be in school for their mental health, on and on and on. And I hear that, and I believe that, accept it. But what have you guys noticed as far as, I don't want to say the mental health of our kids, but that's the best word I can think of. As far as this pandemic, and I know we're tired of talking about it, we're also tired of being in it. So I kind of want to know kind of the effect that that's had, and how that's kind of had you guys to juggle around, too, if you don't mind speaking of some of that.
So definitely agree. Mental health has definitely been a big concern of ours, and what we can do to wrap supports around. And supports come from outside of the community, to parent involvement, to what we can do within our schools. So that's what, I mean, I think whenever we talk about how blessed we are to work in Murfreesboro City Schools, and the supports that we have in our city schools is amazing. We have high standards, so whenever we interview people, we're like, do you know what we do? Because we are elite. We do an amazing job of meeting our standards, whether it's through ASCA, or even just the core curriculum, and what we can do to address those needs. But I think, you know, that wraparound of supports, whether it's what we're giving and what we're able to provide within the schools, as well as that parent communication, has been definitely more this year of a need in creating a better impact for where that student goes, even in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you taking care of yourselves, too?
Jen, we have time for that.
Yes.
Now, that's very important. We can't have you all burning out. We need you all to take care of all of us.
That's what we was about.
That's right. So can you tell us a little bit about how you're taking care of yourselves so you can continue to help everyone else?
Sure, absolutely. These two ladies have been our team leads this year and last year as well, and they have done an amazing job of pulling our PLC together so that we support each other. We also break down into groups of two or three throughout the district, and we support each other on that level as well. That is hugely beneficial as a professional and on a personal level, to be able to connect with someone who understands what's going on and can share the burden. So yes, I appreciate that format, and I appreciate these ladies for their leadership in the last couple of years.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Moore?
Thank you. I want to add one group of people to your list, Mr. Campbell, of people who appreciate school counselors, and that's parents. And I'll just speak personally as well, especially for Miss Baltimore up there. When my kids were in school and then made the transition to middle school, I don't think I had realized just how, what an effect Miss Baltimore had had until, you know, one of them was kind of struggling with the transition, and we realized that the problem was this child had not yet found their Miss Baltimore to help sort of settle things through the day. So it's, you're hugely important and appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. And I was glad to see you mention the mental health part of it. And I think Dr. Gilbert certainly was very, an advocate of good, strong mental health, in particular with young people. But I think in the last two or three years, the mental health situation, and I guess I'm going to say crisis almost, with our young people, has been brought more to the forefront. And people like you that continue to mention it and continue to advocate for something for our young people, I think is very important. And I think we're, I think we're finally making some headway through legislature and funding for that. And I thank you very much for that part of it.
And these individuals are really helping our staff and our teachers this year.
Yes. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate you being here. Mr. Marlin?
I just wanted to share with you one more thing about what they do. On a regular basis, they deal with every subgroup that comes into the school of service providers. We have, we have behavior specialists, we have ACEs counselors, we have school social workers, we have counselors from Centerstone and from Stars, we have departments of children's services. And all those people really come to these folks, because they're the people in the building that know the children, know the families, know what's going on. And so all those people interface with them, because they're the people that are in the building to share that information. So that's a big responsibility. It is an important part of what they do. You saw in the video that some schools had more than one counselor. Every school has a full-time counselor, and then the larger schools have another part-time counselor that shares the load. You may have noticed the same face at a couple of schools. So those part-time counselors might serve three days at one building and two days at another building. We have one that actually goes to three schools, and she's to two and one. So depending on the number of students in the building, that's how we try to assign our counselors. But they do a tremendous job, and we're really proud of what they do, and I'm glad that you had this opportunity to share with you tonight.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Marlin.
All right, do we have any other business to come before our board tonight? Mr. Settles?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman. I want to say thank you to all of the schools for such a tremendous outpouring of love and support for School Board Appreciation Week. It's been like School Board Appreciation Month, because we got stuff the last time, and then this. What are y'all going to do next time we meet? Is there going to be some more stuff? Oh, no. But thank you, really, to all of the schools. And with the coronavirus being what it is, and we haven't been as present in the schools as we would like to have been with shifting schedules and days and things like that. But thank you for all of the appreciations that you've shown to us. We've got another goodie bag and tons of stuff. Lisa, the only thing I didn't get this year was my annual book that I'm supposed to donate. You just took care of it without telling us, right?
Yeah, I did, one.
Thank you. Thank you, schools, so much.
Yes.
Yes, it was very nice. It has been. I will make this announcement, particularly for those of you that are at home, maybe watching on TV. Trey Duke and I will be on with Truman Thursday morning at 9:00, and if you want to know more about Trey Duke, you can tune in. I'm sure you're going to learn something. Thank you very much. With no other business coming before the board, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor? Thank you, and good night.